If I could have your attention, I'm going to call this meeting of the Manhattan City Commission for November 15th to order. This is a legislative meeting, one where we take votes. And the first order of business is to call the roll. So Brenda Roof Wolf, would you, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse.
Present.
Commissioner Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Ready.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business, next order of business, I guess, is a proclamation designating November 27th as Small Business Saturday. And Faith Hall, the owner of Rustic Roots Hair Company and Ivy Hair Studio, is here to accept the proclamation. So if you'd join me at this microphone. You're welcome to come up also. I think you have several people here that are supportive of small business, if anyone wishes to join you. So the text of the proclamation, whereas the small locally owned businesses of Manhattan are vital to our city's economic health and contribute to our unique and vibrant community character. And the U.S. Small Business Administration states that small businesses create 65% of net new local jobs. With every $100 spent at a local retailer, $68 will return to the community through taxes, payroll, and donations to local schools and charities. Whereas, public awareness of the contributions made by Manhattan local businesses is the key to sustaining a healthy business climate, and the people of Manhattan are grateful to the small locally owned businesses of Manhattan for their generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy. And whereas, we join American Express, the U.S. Chamber, and other local chambers of commerce in supporting America's locally owned small businesses. Now therefore, I, Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 27th, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Manhattan and urge all residents of Manhattan to join the rest of America and do a portion of their holiday shopping at small locally owned businesses. And so Faith Hall is here. And would you like to say a few things?
Yes. Hi, I'm Faith Hall. I'm here representing Rustic Roots Hair Company and Ivy Hair Studio. I gratefully accept this proclamation on behalf of small businesses in Manhattan and the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce.
There we go. The next item on the agenda would be comments from commissioners.
I just want to remind everyone, you know, the Festival of Lights celebration's coming up in a couple of weeks. And just to remind everyone, you know, Whoville puts that on, that's not a city thing. No tax dollars go to it. And the Chamber's selling nice little decorations, 10-year Festival of Lights things, that if you buy one of these, will go to it. And if you don't want to buy an ornament, you can still go to the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation and kick in because, you know, all donations, you know, small or large, are going to help. Because as you know, last year, the tree got sort of wrecked by Storm Grinch, and it's being rebuilt, and you can see that down there now. So we're looking to have a great event, new lights, different little improvements over last year. So if you've got an extra dollar lying around, please donate. Thank you.
Yes, so next week is Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We will not be having a meeting next week, or the week after that. But we're not having, there isn't a big community dinner like there used to be in the past where Old Chicago sponsored it, and there was a lot of, a lot of people in our community would attend. And before that, it was at the Manhattan High School. So this year, we don't have one. So hopefully, next year, somebody also picks it up. But I know Be Able is having a smaller version, and that is on Thanksgiving. So if you are around town and you'd like to visit, I believe Be Able is on Fifth Street, so please feel free to make a visit there that Thursday. Or also donate items. They're always open for any kind of, not only food items, but clothings, coats, gloves, whatever you might have. And in addition to that, there's a lot of community events that are taking place where donations are being accepted, especially food in this instance. So I just wanted to let you know about next week and what might be taking place at Be Able, but throughout our community. So if you have guests coming in or visitors coming into Manhattan, the tree lighting ceremony is that Friday, I believe. Hopefully, it's a nice day. And I just wanted to have everybody go out and visit everything that's happening in Manhattan. Thank you.
I think, Yusha, you are aware of a warming center that's opening. Would you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
So I believe there's a warming center, I want to say...
It's on Casement Road.
Yeah, Casement Road, 2400 Casement Road. Center of Ministry, I think, is what it's called. And it's open in the evenings if the, if it's 40, if it's less than 40 degrees outside. There's pickup at Be Able between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m., and then they drop you off at Be Able at 8:00 a.m. So if anybody needs a place to stay warm when it's getting so cold outside, please call Be Able, and they will refer you to a warming shelter in our community. Thank you.
And we all have situations where we run across people who may need that kind of support. So I encourage you, by making us all aware of it, we're better able to refer people, and that's important, as we talk about a lot of high-dollar things tonight. We also have people in the community who need help. So thank you for being that sensitive. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. And we have, those have been published, there's an agenda at the door and a slot out there, so you're welcome if you'd like to see the whole list. And I think one of the items has been removed from the agenda, and that is Fort Riley Boulevard Sidewalk Gap Project from the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition. That has been removed from the agenda, in case your copy has that. Our commissioners, do you have an interest in talking about any of the Consent Agenda items? Okay, seeing no one. Is anyone from the, does anyone from the public want to comment? This is an opportunity for, to comment on the, anything on the Consent Agenda. You're welcome to come to the podium and sign in. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period for that and look for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Okay. And I guess the next item is the item removed from the agenda that I've already covered, so I won't go through that again. The next is the General Agenda. And the first item is to consider the final development plans for Midtown Development and transfer of city-owned parking lot at 12th and Laramie Street. And Jason Hilters is here, the deputy city manager, is here to present that.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, as the memo highlights, in April, the Commission, Back Nine Development, entered into a final agreement. There are a lot of details in that agreement, a lot of attachments, but at that point in time, Back Nine obligated itself to constructing a $40 million minimum building in Aggieville in exchange for the parking lot that the city currently owns at 12th and Laramie. While we considered that agreement that evening, there was an indication within the agreement that when they reached a point of final design, they would come back before you all, make sure that approval was still granted before the transfer took place. Everything we talked about on April 19th is still in effect. This evening, it gives the developer an opportunity to come before you and the community and really say what they're doing different. That final design is the last step before you all, before they, we transfer the land and they start construction. So they're here this evening to provide an update, highlight what it is, it's the same, highlight any differences that they may have experienced since April in their designing effort. And much like the Art and Light Museum, they come before you looking for that blessing so they can go start construction. Our blessing involves transferring land, as did Art and Light. And we want to make sure they're going to build what they say they were going to build. And that's really the opportunity this evening. The agreement also highlights the public projects. And this afternoon, we included a couple of concepts, and we can run through those now, just very briefly. We are still in the design phase. I, having a glass ball, or a crystal ball in April, I would have said by now, we would have been through a public process. But internally and with our consultants, we've had a few delays along the way. We are at conceptual stage here for 12th Street. There's a couple of concepts in terms of what we're going to share tonight. But it also gives us the opportunity to see where their brainstorming has been. We've had some reaction and feedback to these. This is 12th Street, and you can see the references to Kites, Annie May's, and the Midtown, from Morrow to Laramie. One of the biggest things that staff has recognized, and you can see it down in the legend, there's a fire emergency access that has to be maintained on 12th Street. There's 26 feet where we got to be able to get a fire truck off Morrow, down 12th, with its nose over the alley. It has to be able to get services to the Midtown five-story structure and serve everything else along the way. So we can't put amenities in the middle of the street, but we can put them on the edges. So they've started to create some designs, a streetscape, landscaping, lighting. And you can see there's a covered area in front of the Midtown Building that is being proposed. We're looking at that. It'd be a seating area, it'd be an opportunity for some outdoor entertainment. But I wanted you to know, we're looking at concepts. I really didn't plan to spend a whole lot of time on these tonight, but the agreement calls for them to be outlined. We've made progress. In April, we signed contracts with BHS to construct them. We signed contracts with Olson to design them. So these are ours. These are not the developers to do, they're the City of Manhattan's to do. And all that design and all those contracts will come back before you in the future. So they're not going to be done by TJ or Back Nine. They're going to be done with a contract we have with the same contr, construction company, excuse me, contractor. But it's not going to be a Back Nine-led development. There will be adjacencies and coordination, and it's really a big reason why we have that contract with BHS. But again, these are our projects. We will come back to you all for final authority and granting that construction. This is another concept, again, have to maintain that access off Morrow. Just a different layout in terms of pavers and use of property, similar sales and entertainment area down here where gatherings could take place. Some of the feedback we'll need from you all when we bring these concepts for actual feedback is just, how do we want to approach this with alcohol? It's something you really need to start thinking about. We come out of Solong and Lucha with a railing that allows for alcohol to come at, extending their premises into that area. We've got sidewalks, we've got streets, but they're really not going to function like sidewalks and streets anymore. We really need to think about how this, this property needs to be designated, and how much of a consumption of alcohol do we want to see? Is it daily? Is it weekly? Is it monthly? Is it special events like we do now? We need to start thinking about how far we want to go with that, because the design can actually be done in a way that could accommodate certain scenarios. So wanted to plant that seed with you this evening as well. Laramie Street is also part of the public improvements and adjacency. Again, one of our major concerns with Laramie Street is the width of the street. The width has to be this 26 feet for fire staging. This is, the cross-section, I think, is one of the better ones, just to kind of give you a feel for the roughly 60 feet of right-of-way that we use. While the fire truck only occupies a 12-foot lane, it needs the next eight and six feet to be able to straddle that, put its outriggers, and get the ladders to serve the adjacent buildings. So we need this full 26 feet for staging, you need the 20 for the travel lane. So our internal engineers and zoning are looking at, and fire personnel are looking at, the use of these PED zones, drop-off zones, as part of that 26 feet. So we don't just have a 26-foot wide, one-way street, which Laramie is today, it's a one-way. We can still accommodate parking, have a lane for traffic, but then create some other amenities on Laramie, make it more attractive. This kind of gives you a better sense of pavement uses, all of the dark gray along this way would be more of your street environment. Really, everything on either side is more of a sidewalk, pedestrian, bike zone, or a limited PED zone where we can put planners and amenities within the area adjacent to it. That's really where we're at on the public improvements. We really want to take concepts that make it through staff's review to a public forum, and probably a couple of them. When we were doing our study back in 2016, 2017, we met in a pavilion with multiple concepts, got a lot of the businesses in the community to come and give us reactions. We'd like to take these probably more into Aggieville and get reactions from businesses, from customers, property owners. We got to figure out how to do that and get engagement and get reactions and feedback. We'll work with Dennis and the ABA to schedule those. I think now, we're about ready to turn com, we just met today, we'll turn comments back over to Olson. We'll get those scheduled more than likely in the first quarter of 2023. We'll be back before you all with designs and get feedback. And then by next summer, fall, you'll see a GMP from BHS to construct these public Any questions on those public improvements? I bring them up because they were referenced in the agreement. Quite frankly, we're not ready to talk about them, but since they were in the agreement, we put them in the packet today to let you know, we're working on them. They need feedback from us, and we need to go engage with the public. The agreement itself talks about the developer being obligated to the, approach the commission with a final design, a summary of those improvements, which I've done, an estimate certified by the architect of the $40 million, a project schedule of the private project, and if they've acquired that land. You'll see a presentation from the private developer here in a second, which will highlight a lot of these things, including the estimate and the progress schedule. I've highlighted, as I mentioned, the public improvements, and they have shared, and it is evident on GIS, that Midtown Land Company owns the parking lot that McCullough used to own, where the parking was adjacent to Chipotle. From a staff perspective, we feel like they've met all the requirements of the agreement, which would trigger then the eventual land transfer. And again, they're here this evening to give you an overview of where they're at, and if there are any modifications from when they were in front of you in April. In April, what was submitted was reviewed in relationship to the design guidelines in Aggieville, and staff found it inconformant. TJ can elaborate on this, but they did go to the BZA and actually got a height restriction approved. 65 feet is what the limitation is in Aggieville, and the BZA allowed that to go to 70 for this, for this building. So they did go through that formal process to get that authority. But if you don't have any more questions from me at this point in time, I'd introduce TJ and Tracy, and they can walk through this presentation.
Commissioners, do you have questions? We've had a financial statement here, and I just had some questions. Should I, should they be addressed to the developer or to you? Like, what does, what are interest reserves? 2.8 million?
I think TJ can address those things. As far as the...
Later in the presentation.
Yeah, just as a, the agreement talks about financials being provided to city staff, city staff reviewing those. I have reviewed their bank commitments.
Okay.
They do meet the threshold at which we ask them to meet within the final development agreement. But that question, I think, is a little bit different.
This is the budget. Okay, thank you. And I don't want to start off with that, but I didn't know if I needed to ask you or the developer. Okay.
Hi, my name is TJ Vilkanskas, and I'm with Back Nine Development, 3417 Vanessa Drive, here in Manhattan. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to keep it brief. We've kind of had some of these conversations before. The biggest reason I'm here is to address any questions that you may have. And one thing I did want to point out, and you all know this, but I think it's an important part of this project, is my family moved here in '82 when I was pretty young. So I've lived in the Manhattan community for over 40 years. This is where we live. This is where my family is. This is where we do business. And fitting with Small Business Saturday coming down the road, we are a local small business. We've also are working with other local small businesses who you'll hear from today, Tracy Anderson, Andersonite Architects, Patrick Shutter of BHS Construction, among other people that are all going to be working on this project and helping see it through. I think that's important, because this is just not another project for us. We're not just trying to do this, make as much money as we can, and move on to the next community. This is home, this is where we are, and this is where our reputation's built. And so that's a really important aspect to this, that I just wanted to make sure I pointed out. We're going to, I'm going to start right with your question, to be honest with you. We're going to go right into the financial piece of it. That is the biggest piece of the agreement with the City of Manhattan. The agreement states that we will spend at least $40 million on this particular building, and the reason for that amount is because we're trying to project out the amount of property tax revenue that this particular property is going to generate. Backing up a little bit, the reason that is important is because the city had the foresight to put into place a TIF district, so every single additional dollar of property tax revenue that is generated in Aggieville goes back to improving Aggieville. So when we talk about the streetscapes and things like that, as Jason was pointing out, generating property tax revenue sooner rather than later, because that TIF district does have an expiration, is really important. And one of the reasons why this project is going to help out the whole Aggieville area. But you can see here on the screen, you know, land costs, that has to do with the dollar to the city and what we paid for the private parking lot next to it. Architect and engineering expenses are pretty self-explanatory. I did provide to Jason the actual contract that we have with Andersonite on that. There's some other soft costs. Interest reserves are basically just any money that we need to set aside to cover the cost of interest for any borrowing during construction. So to answer your question specifically, that is an important budget item, and that will be spent. There's certain sponsor fees and contingency fees that are in there, mainly for contingency, worst-case scenarios. The biggest piece of this is the hard construction costs, and this is based on an estimate that's been provided by BHS Construction, who we are working on finalizing our contract with as we speak, needing to get through this step first before we can actually sign those documents. But that budget has been signed off by the architect and the construction company stating that that is an accurate amount for what they think that our building is going to cost to build. That gets us to white box space, essentially. So that does not include any tenant finishes whatsoever. So without any tenant finishes, we're still planning on spending $53 million and change on the building. Did you have a question? Okay. And then, we don't know what the tenant improvements are going to be, but we have just estimated based on experience, that you're probably looking at about $100 a square foot, so taking the square footage into account, it's probably another $10 to $11 million, which is how we come up to $64 million. So it looks like we're going to be spending $25 million more than what our agreement was with the City of Manhattan. A lot of that is just construction costs have gone up significantly since we started talking about the project. And that's just kind of what it costs to build a building like we're trying to design right now, which is essentially a Class A office building. That's, that's what we're going for in this situation. Are there any questions on the budget before I move on any further? Can...
What are sponsor fees?
Sponsor fees are what we, a lot of what we take to pay our people and everything inside of that. So development fees and those sorts of things are included in that. It would be a common thing. Typically, it's about 4% the cost of the overall project.
Okay. Thank you. I think that answered them.
Okay.
Thank you.
On this slide, we tried to break down, when we went through the pre-development agreement, it was unanimously approved, to what the building looked like then, and what it looks like now, and how the square, how it breaks out per square foot. And one of the major changes, as Jason alluded to, we wanted to comment on some changes that we've made since that time period, is we did away with any residential part to the, to the building. The reason being is, the whole reason we wanted to do this project was to create jobs. We wanted to bring people to the Aggieville District from 8:00 to 5:00. And the best way that I know how to do it as a real estate developer is to create office space. We thought the residential piece was not according to what the overall intent was of the building. And we also have done a lot of residential projects in the area and around Manhattan in recent years, and thought that office space was a better fit. The second reason being is, we have gotten a tremendous amount of interest for Class A office space. We can't sign leases, we can't get letter of intents until we get through all the stuff that we need to get through with the city. But based on that interest that we've received, we feel confident that this is going to be able to be full with office space tenants, and we're excited to move that portion forward. So you can see where the residential, where we had it at 17,500 square feet, is now going to zero square feet. And you can see, the bulk of that is going into office and a little bit of extra retail space in there, which is mainly surrounding the courtyard, which is a nice place for retail space. And we've had a lot of interest in those, in that space, too. So that's the bulk of the change to the building. Not really a lot of overall square footage. As you can see, a lot of the decline in square footage had to do with the deck space that was assigned to the residential units. Those are not on the building anymore, because those aren't residential units. So that was a fair amount of square footage that came off, just by not having the decks as part of the buildings. Any questions associated with the changes with the building?
The retail I envisioned was, would be on first floor. But you, if you've gone, I just wondered about the, if it's still on first floor, or, because you've moved some of the square footage up to, or taken some away, I guess, from...
Yeah, no, I think that is a great question, and Tracy is actually going to come up here right after me and go through it floor by floor, and just explain a little bit of that and what we're trying to do there to engage the community. But yes, that's a good question.
So TJ, you had, you took out residential, and I understand why. What was, how many did you anticipate in your previous plan for residential?
I believe it was 12 units is what we had in the original one, was just 12 units. And to be honest, they would have been rented out at the highest dollar in Manhattan, and I didn't know that it was necessarily fitting a need that we had at that point in time. I thought having another 20,000-plus square feet of some sort of office space would be a better fit for it. And so that's why we, that's why we went that direction. And honestly, you know, we want to do, we want to construct a building that's going to be used and desired and people want, and, and we have been shocked at the interest we have for this type of office space. Pleasantly surprised, and we're really excited for it. And so that's why we kind of pushed it in that direction.
Okay. Mainly because sometimes when I look at downtown, people like having their residence almost above their offices sometimes. I've seen that in a variety of areas. But I just had that question. I understand why you switched it over.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. I think that there are other areas near Aggieville or in that same district that maybe are better suited to go with more of a residential development. You know, once we get this going... You know, once we get this going, we create the jobs, we get leases in place, then that will dictate to us that, hey, maybe we do need some more living units down in that area. But right now, you know, we've put in a few hundred units here in recent years and other people have too. And so that was the reason why we kind of, it was only going to be 12 units anyways and we thought it would be a better fit too. You know, anywhere you read, office space is going to create a new job every 100 to 200 square feet of office space you have. So if you have 20,000-plus square feet of office space on that top floor, in theory, you're creating a lot of jobs. At this point in time, you know, it's just a big box and we don't know exactly how many jobs it's going to create. It's different than like a scorpion where they can tell us how many jobs it's going to create. But we anticipate, you know, this generating, you know, upwards of 700 jobs in the building. And that's, that's the main goal behind it.
Are there other questions?
I don't, I don't know how to make this thing work.
Commissioners, Tracy Anderson with Andersonite Architects. And I'm just going to jump into, I think the next handful of slides are just each floor level. So I'll just kind of walk you through each one of those. So this is the lowest floor level, so the first floor. And this is primarily all retail space. You can see we obviously have, in the yellow is circulation, whether that's horizontal or vertical. And then you see in the purple, a little bit of utility space. So you're looking at the electrical panels, some mechanical equipment, things like that. But all of that stuff shaded in green is potential retail space to be built out by future tenants. Second floor, again, there's a mix up here that it could be retail or commercial, the green space. And that's the space that's adjacent immediately around the outdoor courtyard space. And so we're looking at that as it could go either way. And we've set things up from a code standpoint that it could be used in either scenario. It's, it all dictates by some ratings on structure and stuff like that, but we thought it was important to have that flexibility in the space. Again, the yellow is horizontal or vertical circulation. The purple is utility space or service space, things like restrooms, mechanical rooms, stuff like that. And then the blue is office space. So you can see the majority of the second level, or at least these two sides are office space. The big black boxes are essentially sort of vertical shafts where ductwork and grease duct and makeup air and all that kind of stuff runs vertically up to the roof for potential restaurant spaces or something like that down on the first floor or on the second floor. So those are throughout all the levels, but they're just vertical shafts in the building. Third floor, again, primarily now, third, fourth, and fifth are basically identical floors. So we're assuming all office space. The yellow, again, horizontal, vertical circulation and the purple being restrooms and other service-type space. Fourth floor, exactly the same. And fifth floor, pretty much exactly the same. So a five-story building, again. And TJ's already run through all of the differences in, in the square footages. And some of that came about from actually getting Olson to do the boundary survey. We knew exactly what we had to work with and getting our building to fit within that footprint of the existing lot and all that stuff. So that dictated a little bit of the difference, but yeah, I think that's it. These are the most current renderings of the building. I would still call them a work in progress, but you can see, you know, the first floor retail here and then second floor, third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor, and the large courtyard space over here. Maybe there's one more rendering. So this is from the other angle. You can see the outdoor courtyard space and that, how it would get serviced. You know, one of the things we're really pushing hard on is to try to find a restaurateur to occupy this space over here and have some outdoor dining. We've been kind of playing with the layout for them and really trying to get them interested in the space. So that's a goal we have in mind. But we have to also keep it flexible in case they decide not to pursue that. But, and I think, yeah, so-
Could you go back?
Yeah, I will try to.
What is, what side of the building, what orientation is this?
So you're looking at the Kites Building, this white box in the foreground here.
Okay.
So this would be, this would be 12th Street.
Okay.
This way.
Alley there.
This is the alley right here. And then Laramie over here. That's obviously not what's there now across from Laramie. That's just sort of some artistic license taken. But, so yeah, you're looking-
So the big open spaces on the north side.
On the, it's open to the north and to the east. Yeah. And then, so the previous image, sort of the front yard or the front of the building, this is Laramie Street in the foreground.
Okay.
And then 12th Street along this edge, the eastern edge. So-
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello. Patrick Shutter with BHS Construction. TJ asked to have me come talk about the schedule. So specifically to Midtown, it's about a two-year project. Hopefully, we can get some tenants within that two-year project and finish out some tenant finishes within that timeframe. But importantly, important to the city would be some of the street improvements that are happening. And our goal just in general is when we finish with the Midtown project is to finish with the streetscapes that are encompassing that. So kind of having a finished product, streets and building all in one. There are some projects that, with the streets specifically with Laramie and some of 12th Street that we're going to try and get done ahead of time. One thing I, I guess I want to stress is we understand that there's existing businesses in the area and we understand that and want to make sure that we move swiftly through those projects so that we impact those the least and make sure that we get them open for business as soon as possible when, when construction happens. Nobody, nobody likes construction in front of their business, so we want to be there as little time as possible. But anyways, the goal would be two years from today, have streets and everything else open. I think Jason alluded to the fact that there's still some progress to happen with the plans on the streetscape projects. We are happy to be a part of that process. And obviously with the vertical project going right next, it makes a lot of sense to have the same company working on both projects together. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. Is there any more slides for me? Oh yeah, you guys want to, let's study this real quick, okay?
Go for it.
Is there any other questions about the schedule?
I don't have questions about the schedule, but we have questions in general for anybody who wants to take them. So the, you talked a lot about the design, so a few questions just about the design as presented. And I know there's probably going to be modifications as we move forward. There's a lot of glass on that, so how does that fit into the facade of the rest of the Aggieville district? Are you looking at making it comparable to what they have and some of their features? This looks very different than what's there in some of the Aggieville, the, the character of Aggieville.
Yeah, I think we're trying to build the best possible building we can that can attract the most businesses. The companies we've been talking to that want to be here are companies that are interested in graduating K-State students and want to use this building as an advertising tool to attract them and keep them in Manhattan. This is what they see when they go to Chicago, Denver, Dallas, Kansas City, and they don't see it here right now. It's one of the reasons why the foundation's been successful in their office space. It's different than what we've seen here in Manhattan. And one of the reasons they've been able to fill a lot of those spaces is with companies that are doing just that same thing. And so that's the reason, you know, and working with, with Tracy and his team, and they've been great to work with, we wanted to design a building that was going to get people into Aggieville and we were going to be successful at leasing it up. I think there's going to be certain elements and some natural stone and some other things on pieces of the building that we're going to bring in. We wanted it to be open and engaging to the other parts of Aggieville as well as, like I said, bring people there from 8 to 5 during the week. It's definitely different. Like I can't, I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that it looks the same as anything else because it doesn't, but that was kind of a little bit of the intent of it, so.
No, I think it should be different, but I, we don't want people to just, I mean, I wouldn't want just people to look at it and say it's in somewhere else. I feel like it should have some Manhattan characteristics to it that make it stand out within what's already there in the frame of, well, for example, limestone. K-State has often thought about having limestone here and there. So something of that sort. I'm not sure with all the characteristics that Aggieville has in it, but to make, to have the element of Manhattan in there and also the future, like you have right there that looks very, like it can be in Chicago, it can be anywhere.
Sure.
There is limestone in this building, especially at the lower pedestrian level.
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to see some of it.
You can see there's limestone along the alleyway, there's limestone along 12th Street, and there's actually limestone in front of the entrance that goes vertically up the side of those, that big window in the middle.
Sure.
So there, there are elements of-
There, yeah, that's what I'm saying, just not so that it has to be identical, but something that makes it seem, oh, Manhattan-ish. There wasn't any conversation about parking. So where, I'm, I'm thinking last time you presented, you said somewhere up around 300 to 500 people would be in and out or working or something like that. That was the number that stuck to me. So where, I know Aggieville was concerned about parking. We have the parking garage, but that might take up what's going on there right now. So what is your vision for parking in that area?
Yeah, I think that, you know, this building has a little bit of parking on the ground level. We have the parking garage that is not being used. And I mean, we're not talking about it specifically at this meeting and it was not a part of the pre-development agreement, but if you do look on GIS, we do own the next block over under the same entity. And so we do control that right now. So all I can say is if there is a, a need or desire for parking, that there's land available that we control that could potentially be a solution there, so.
Yeah, no problem. And I, I did call Dennis before the meeting and just wanted to see their feedback from the Aggieville Business Association. I'm happy that you're having constant communication with, with their group to see what's happening there. That's extremely important as someone who doesn't, is not a huge part of Aggieville and all of their, there's so much happening there right now as far as construction that we're not involved in every piece of that discussion. So that communication piece is very critical to it. And I think, like you said, you've met all of the other qualifications or requirements necessary for this. So I'm looking forward to all the other pieces as they come together in your future design projects. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to go back and comment on your point originally too about the building and fitting in with Aggieville. I've been giving a lot of presentations to various civic organizations about the project here. And one piece we always point out that Tracy and his team helped me create is you have Aggieville and you kind of have this historic two-block area, right? You've got the two-story buildings and all of that. And that's all kind of decided, it's all designed to stay that way. And that's what is in the Aggieville Vision Plan, right? And then as we go around that two-block area, you know, we're going up to a similar height everywhere. And that was the overall design and the reason we did the plan. I do think when this building is originally built, it will look different. I think give it 10 years, it will not look different. And you will start to see it fill up down Laramie and then around Blumente potentially. And I think it's not going to look as different and it's just going to kind of help accent the nice historical part down Moro Street. A lot of great businesses there. And I think this is going to be a really nice version of Aggieville, an enhanced version of Aggieville of what already is great there, so.
I think I must have dozed off when you were talking about the first floor here. Is the white spot going to be, is that parking?
That is.
Correct.
Okay, so is that 20 cars?
That, 20.
12?
26.
26?
Somewhere around there.
Okay.
26.
Okay, so that, that is your, your effort to maintain some parking that was there before.
There is some parking that's there based on the surface area that's there. Obviously, it's less than what's there now, but there is still parking there and that was kind of part of the original conversation too.
Okay. The picture that Tracy had, you guys had included with the original packet showed instead of four or five industrial, no, yeah, four or five industrial columns supporting that side of the roof, he had those beautiful marble-looking Egyptian-based columns there.
In this one?
Is that the-
Tracy.
You need to go.
I-
So in that original version, those were perforated metal panels wrapping a steel column that we were going to internally light. These are a cruciform-shaped column. Now, we're, obviously, money is always an issue. We're going to still internally light those. They just won't be wrapped with that perforated skin.
The decorative stuff.
So, yeah.
Okay, so-
At least today, I won't say we might not add that back in, but as of today, it's, we're just going to internally light these cruciform-shaped columns, so.
You don't have a depiction of what it would look like at night?
We don't yet.
Yeah, okay.
We don't yet. That'll be a future rendering.
Okay, get that to us when you-
Because there's also, and it doesn't show up here, there's some facade lighting. I mean, we're really putting a lot of effort into the lighting so that the building isn't just static, but it can, with the holidays, with the seasons, with football games, whatever, the building can actually live and have a different personality on any different evening. But through the use of lighting and through the use of some sound, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Other questions from commissioners? None? Okay.
And I think I was just, one more thing I just wanted to wrap up to by just, and maybe it's not necessary, but we do have an established history of taking pieces of ground that are basically generating $0 of property tax revenue and significantly increasing that. Most recently, we had a project over in Grandmere on a hill that had about a 15% grade that we took from generating, you know, a few thousand dollars a year to, there's over 30 million dollars of real estate on that hill right now. The only reason I say that is just to give us some credibility, you know? Once again, this is, this is where we live and work and this is a really important project to us. I already mentioned that we've bought more land in that district, so this is not a one and done deal. We believe in Aggieville. I'm excited about Aggieville. I'm excited what Dennis and his team are doing over there and everybody on the, the Aggieville Business Association Board. And so we just think it's going to be a really cool place as we go through time here. You know, Manhattan's interesting because you have the lake to the north, you got Fort Riley to the west, and you got the river to the south. We can go east or we can go back in the middle and we can start creating things in the middle or start enhancing things in the middle. And I think that's kind of where we're at and we're really excited about that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have a further questions before we go to public comments?
Okay, at this point, we will encourage folks to come to the podium and offer their comments on the presentation and the information that's been provided.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Cook, Director of Aggieville Business Association, 1125 Moro. And we do have a problem with this, with this project and that is that it's, we'd like to have it done quicker, if, if you can make that happen. You guys are so slow. Let's just get this thing going. Now, we see this is our, we know what our future is. And this is, this is so important to, you know, financially for the, for this to work for the city. This really helps out with everything we're doing. This is a, we know that the parking garage was a, was a, was a game changer for us to get, get everything started, you know? And we've got the private investment with Courtyard by Marriott came in, big deal. This is, this is a bigger deal and, and with more to come. So we are 100% behind it. We've had nothing but great communication with everybody and- So we are 100% behind it. We've had nothing but great communication with everybody involved in this thing. We would like it to go faster, but that's our only problem with this, so we can't wait for it to happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis. Does anyone else wish to come forward and speak to the commission this evening?
Well, good evening. I never wanted to become a regular here, but we're getting there. Cam Ward, 1929 Blue Stem Terrace. I'm an Aggieville business owner, an Aggieville property owner, and I'm on the Aggieville Business Association Board. I was going to come and talk to you guys about parking tonight, but this, to me, it's a monumental project. It's been monumental to see how much time and money that Back Nine has put into a plan that tonight could go away. It's monumental to see the local dollars that get put into our district and to our whole community through this project. And when we hear about K-State students graduating and having a place to work and new jobs created, if this thing does half of what they say it's going to do, it's going to be the most monumental project that our city has seen through private dollars. I mean, I can't think of any other private project, privately funded project, that would have this kind of impact. I love that the building looks different. I want to see the rest of Aggieville look like Midtown. I want our original charm on Moro Street to stay there, but I want to see progress, and I want to see tax dollars that come from it. So I would hope that all of you would be on board with this as much as our Aggieville Association is on board with it, because I think it would be a monumental mistake to not fully support this and push it forward. Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward. You're invited to please come forward. Thank you very much. I'll close the public comment portion and proceed to Commissioner comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to, to thank everyone who's worked on this, both the private investors and the staff. I think it's a great plan. I'm really excited about it. Really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I do think it's a, a good vision for, for the Aggieville District. I know the land, the city-owned land is about a million some-odd dollars. I think that's a good investment from the city, trusting TJ and his group and all of our architects and engineers and planners in this room to make this vision a reality, much like the Art and Light Museum that we're investing in. We have a lot of community members that are putting in their own money into something they believe in to make Manhattan a better place for everybody. So I, I look forward to the grand project once it's completed, and during that time, there's going to be some growing pains in Aggieville, and hopefully, everybody has enough patience and weighs this through, and I hear, you know, that you've been easy to approach and very accessible to anybody who wants to have discussions about anything that they might have a concern about, so I appreciate that as well. So thank you for the presentation, and I think it's a, it's a move forward in the right direction.
Wen? No? No.
I just have several comments. I had expected, when we approved the develop, new development code, that it would cover projects like this, and I don't see that at work. And I guess it's because it's a city parking lot, and so that means we have other holes in the net for future parking lot developments, where there's, doesn't go through the planning board, doesn't go through the regular kinds of development process, in my view. And I could be totally wrong, and others can, will be happy to point that out, I'm sure. I am, I, I'm, I agree, I, I had, I served on the Aggieville Vision when we developed that plan, and I really had more of an expectation that it would be in keeping with the, the brick kind of thing in Aggieville, and as I do the downtown, in keeping with the limestone facade. So, you know, this is different, and I'm sure that we can absorb it, and it'll be fine. I just don't, I think that character is important, and I don't want us to look like every other town. I don't want to look like Lincoln, or some of the other communities where, or Westport, or wherever. So I want an identity, and I had, my expectation was we might achieve that with more facade orientation. And, but, on the other hand, you know, the, I suppose you have to break with tradition at some point, and anything goes, is what I'm seeing, so here we go. I'm, I have a philosophical concern, and that is about the parking lot, and, and using our, giving our parking lots away for a dollar or, or nothing, as the case may be. And I have, I voted against the Marriott project for that reason. I voted against the sale of the parking lot. I know that any farmer would be happy to have a farm if they could just get the land, but they can't afford the land, and so many of them don't go into farming. And it's the same with businesses. If you have a building, you're going to find it a lot easier to be a successful business, have a successful business, than if you are making mortgage payments, and so I, if, if, I'm one of the commissioners, and so I'm not going to prevail, but it is my minority report, so to speak, my minority thinking about the parking lots. I don't want to put a "for sale" sign on every city parking lot for the future, saying, "Free," you know, "You can have this lot, just make an application to the city, and by golly, you can get it." So I don't want that for the remainder of the parking lots we have. I'm going to ask the city commission to split the vote, so that the sale is one vote and the project is another. I'd like to split my vote on that, and rather than have to vote the whole thing down, I, I, I'm going to vote no on the land sale. Just going to give you that heads up.
Just for a point of clarification, the real estate agreement has already been approved.
Okay.
The execution of that is based on the acceptance or approval of the final design.
Okay.
I wrote that in the motion, so everybody knew, with the acceptance of the final design, you have authorized us to go transfer that property. But that was actually executed as part of the final development agreement.
Well, I can still vote against the transfer that you're talking about in this motion.
I'd like to.
Hold that thought just a second there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things where if we're giving the parking lot away to somebody, that, that's, yeah, it's not, you can, there's a million ways to look at it.
I don't.
I look, yeah, I look at it as the million dollars, $700,000, million dollars a year we're going to get off of that land is worth far more than selling it for $200,000, $300,000, $400,000, whatever we, appraisal, million dollars, if it was a million dollars to sell the land, and we got $50,000 a year after that, it's like, well, that wasn't a good idea. I'd rather sell it for a dollar and get a million dollars for the next 100 years. And so, and this is going to be totally different than the reason we maybe transfer some land to the Manhattan Housing Authority. Yeah, that's not going to be a huge property tax generator like this is going to be. And so there's, yeah, there's going to be a little bit of dichotomy on our discussion tonight about what's, what's the purpose of, of the land, and why, why are we doing that? And so, but this thing, it just, I've been in love with this project from, from the first time we saw it with the local team that they've put together. I just don't think this thing can miss, and I'm, I'm very supportive, and so I'll go ahead and make a motion here, unless, go ahead. Wen, you started.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and I agree, I think the, the sales tax return and, and the property tax on that building is going to far out exceed the value of the parking lot, so it makes sense. So I was going to make the motion to approve the final design of Midtown Development and authorize city administration to finalize, and the mayor and city clerk to execute all the necessary documents to transfer the city-owned tract at 12th Street and Laramie Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there further comments? Okay, city clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
No.
Commissioner Hennissall?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm supportive of the project. It is the parking lot sale that is my issue, so don't misconstrue what I've just done. There have to, there are boundaries. Each person draws their own boundaries, so, thank you very much. Okay, let's find the agenda. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider a pre-development agreement with Manhattan Housing Authority for senior housing development at Fifth and Pierre Streets, city-owned parking lot.
Good evening, commissioners. Just a brief overview. Based on the feedback we received on October 4th, legal staff, city administration have been in negotiations with Manhattan Housing Authority admin on the site control requirements for the parking lot at Fifth and Pierre. As we talked in October, this is a city-owned parking lot. Manhattan Housing Authority is attempting to create a product to keep and retain those housing vouchers that are currently being used at Garden Grove Apartments. We have put together a pre-development agreement, which we received feedback from MHA as they approached the state, would satisfy the site control necessary to leverage the low-income housing tax credits, which they'll apply for. If they receive those, the pre-development agreement goes on to highlight the transfer of that property and the development of that property. We tried to keep this fairly straightforward and simple in terms of giving them site control so they can pursue those credits, but obviously, we'll need a final development agreement that'll be drafted in the event they do get the credits. There's roughly half of the parking lot is what has been identified as transferable. The other half would, in our estimation, remain a parking lot. We have a provision in here that the Housing Authority would basically replace the parking lot, so there's an opportunity for the city to get a new parking lot out of the transaction in the event they construct a new facility. We have to recognize, they'll probably use it for staging. There's probably going to be some damage, so they have agreed to replace that with a new parking lot. Other than that, there's not a lot of other specifics. As I mentioned in our briefing a couple weeks ago, or a week ago, the lease opportunity gets very complex, and you have to address just so many issues. When you think about the mall, or you think about the conference center, and our relationships with those developers, they're long-term, there's requirements, there is, it is a tremendous amount of legal work to maintain long-term ownership and rights for that property. We felt like with this proposal, and what it's going to be used at, and the inventory that the Housing Authority has in the downtown and our community, they're obviously a unit of government that's part of our auditing process. We have a very good relationship, so the option to transfer that property became more relevant than a long-term lease. Obviously, we'd take your guidance and direction on that, if that's not what you'd like to do, but both sides of administrative negotiations recognize that as a viable opportunity. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Aaron and his team, along with others here on the Zoom call, are available for comments and questions.
So Jason, you talk about half, they were to get half of the lot, or you talked, they would take the west half of the lot, or the east half of the lot?
The, the preference that we've talked about is maintaining a parking lot adjacent to existing businesses and buildings that would remain the cities. So it'd be the east side.
Okay.
And then put the, the MHA development on the west side.
Okay.
That's, our initial thoughts were, it gives the city still the opportunity to work with all those businesses on public parking, and it doesn't move it to the end of the block that would somewhat isolate it for use.
Okay.
So that, that was our thought process.
Yeah, I didn't see any pictures or plaits or anything, so I was just.
Yeah. Can they hear? Okay, now? All right, I took it off mute, so yeah, we're good. So yeah, you've got Aaron and his team. There's a few on the, on the line, but if there's no more questions for me, I'll introduce Aaron, and he can walk you through Housing Authority's perspective. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, commissioners, mayor.
You're Aaron Estabrook.
I am Aaron Estabrook, the executive director for the Housing Authority. Christina Sanchez, Kathy McDonnell are also with us as senior leaders for the National Church Residence, along with Jim Bowman, who is an advisor, couns, consultant with them, that's been working with us in our community, and then Jamie Sheik is here as our legal counsel. So really, we have gone through this multiple times, and unfortunately, I don't have a crystal ball to show you what the project would look like at the end, but I do, I am encouraged in all of the work that's happened between our legal and city to get to a point where we could meet and thread that needle for our ability to apply, to get the financing that's available, up to $10 million or more in tax credits, and then to secure these vouchers that are currently at Garden Grove in our community that assist those 62 seniors that live there, low-income. That translates into a roughly a half-million-dollar investment in our community by the federal government every year, forever, in perpetuity. So that is something we want to preserve, and of course, you're well aware of the flood risk with Garden Grove. So I'm not going to delay, but if there's other things that NCR would like to, to speak to, feel free, and otherwise, we will stand by for questions from the commissioners.
Are your 62 vouchers strictly for elderly or disabled, too?
It's elderly, if they want to. There is, there is a, they're elderly strictly, but there is an age waiver that's possible for 55, so some people have some distinguishes between what constitutes elderly. There is, it does go down to age 55 for one of those contracts.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And Aaron?
Yes.
Hi, Christina Sanchez. Just to add or clarify to that question about the age, I believe the contract regarding Grove One, there is a stipulation that you must be age 62, and the way you could move in below the age of 62 is you must prove that you have a disability that meets the features of the handicap unit. A lot of people can claim a disability, but not necessarily need the features of a handicap unit, and 10% of the units at Garden Grove One are handicap units. So we could possibly have, you know, people under the age of 62 if they prove the need for a handicap unit at Garden Grove, so that's a small amount of units.
Yeah, it, so kind of is the disability answer, but based on an age restriction, kind of, as well? Is there other questions for us?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other? the public comment portion of the meeting, so anyone wishing to speak to this project, if you would please come forward. Seeing no one. Oops, hey Donna.
I forgot to write my name down.
Oh, don't worry.
That's the action. Take me less time to make my comment than it took me to write my address.
To write my name.
Having served on the steering committee for the Manhattan Housing Study and seeing how important the, hence significant, the senior citizen growth is compared to the rest of the population, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to offer in the downtown area residency for older Manhattan citizens. And though we haven't seen the designs, the opportunity of taking this step and watching the development of a solar-roofed, modern structure for senior citizens is a very exciting opportunity. I, I think it's very different than what we just talked about in the previous project, but instead of it being a place to generate funds through the development of business, there's another community need that we recognize in our town, and that is the provision of residency for people of different income levels and different age groups. And the idea that a Pierre, which is a main artery, would go right by an innovative design with solar panels on the roof, perhaps even feeding some electric car plugins is what really excites me about this project, so keep that in mind, please.
Thank you, Donna. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment portion. Commissioners, are there?
Well, I, I supported this the other day, and I'll, I'll vote for it again because there's 100 ways this thing could get derailed and go into the dumpster, and I ain't going to be the one that stops it before progress of things cause that to happen. So I'm all, if it's supposed to happen, it's gonna happen, and I always picture my job is keep it moving along until something bigger than me stops it. And so that's where, until, you know, you don't get the things, somebody bails out, everything goes down the toilet, then, then it stopped on its own, but yeah, I've always figured, let's keep things moving, and if it's supposed to happen, it'll happen, and, and then we can celebrate that or, or not at that point.
Okay.
Obviously, I've been a big supporter of the project. I'm on the Housing Authority Board, so I just brought my top 10 list of why we should approve this item. Actually, it's more than that. It's one is we need to get those seniors moved before there's another flood, and we also need to do it to get our application in by January to keep that timing so we can get it built as soon as possible. It's also a very good time for this type of program. The federal funding environment is very positive. On the other hand, interest rates are escalating, so we want to do it before they go even higher. The downtown location will score extremely well for the tax credits and the funding because of its proximity to services. Will likely have the best application in Kansas. If we try to do someplace else, we may not get it. The downtown location, as already mentioned, is next to those services' amenities, and we talk about the quality of life for these people. Approval of this project clears the way for Carlson Plaza to actually put in extra parking. If we don't get this one approved, there's no need for us to do the extra parking and spend the money over there. This secures 62 vouchers, but these are special vouchers that go with the building. We need a building or a facility to get them, and when you take it over the lifetime of the building, you're talking over 300 seniors that will get housing by doing this project. Also, it creates a nice campus downtown with three buildings, all run by the Housing Authority, so we get efficiencies in the Housing Authority, and plus, we're going to get good management there, because if we don't get good management, we can change it, put someone else in there to make sure that it runs properly. Also, we have a good faith move regarding National Church Residences, who's contributing to the demolition of the old properties, which that's, you know, they didn't make a contingent on doing this, but I think that was a good faith effort on their part, and so we are getting the money. We are going to get a new parking lot back from this, and it also brings those residential units to downtown. So I just think it's a, you know, great project, the timing we need to move forward, and Mark is right, there's a lot more hurdles that are going to have to be done to, to make it happen, but hopefully we'll get there.
I'm still gonna, I'm, I'm in favor of everything you said, except the project. I think flooding is an issue. We're not going to have this project for another two or three years, so it can, we can have a flood next year. I don't know. Anything can happen. My concern is, I did talk to Gina, again, like, just like I did to Dennis before, about the previous project, to get, to see if downtown has changed their mind about this in any way, and they haven't. And I do value their opinion because they're the ones that function down there. They're working on their, I don't know if it's downtown tomorrow, if that's what they're calling it, I don't know the actual name for it, but they're working on their plan for the future, and that's going to be done in the next four to six months, and it would be good to have this property for that discussion, because there's a lot of, we're also talking about workforce housing. There's a lot of moving parts and a very little land to discuss with and to work with. So I felt, I felt this should be reserved for that discussion instead of upending it, and, and then we're giving it away. We're giving the parking lot away, not even a buck like we did for the last one. This is free. So we're giving valuable downtown land free when we haven't even talked about the potential uses for future types of housing downtown. So I feel, with the feedback I've received from the businesses and residents and everybody that's in downtown, I haven't heard them say yes, or given me a thumbs up to this initiative. I understand why you're doing it. I understand it's a pre-development plan, and it may or may not happen, but it, it can happen, too. And, and that's something that I, I'm very concerned about because I feel like the big component, the big piece of that puzzle is not being listened to or being put into that mix of, of the discussion. So I voted against it before, and I will be voting the same way this time around for all the reasons I mentioned.
Yeah, I want to, I want to mention that, you know, and everybody says we're giving away the parking lot. In my mind, it always was a case of, with the demolition of the Garden Way being half a million dollars, and the church group's going to pick that up for the city. In my mind, I, I always said, well, we're getting half a million for this thing. And, and I've always been a big guy to say priorities, you know, and I, and I look at the list. There's a list of positives. John went over those. I won't reiterate them. And, and I, and I'm a member of DMI, actually have a membership in that in, in Aggieville, so, so I know how they feel about it, and of course, the idea there is, well, we can make some money on retail, and we got an expansion plan and all of that. And that, that's the negatives. That, that, that could happen down there, but we just approved, you know, a project that's going to bring in a bunch of property tax and sales tax for the city. So, you know, if you, you raise it up above DMI and look at city as a whole, you know, I, I think we've already addressed, we're going to get more property tax, we're going to get more sales tax, and, and one of our major priorities has been flooding. You know, we've worked on that since I first got on the commission in 2011, and this is an initiative that takes care of it. And so, you know, I settled on voting for it for one simple reason. What's more important? A parking place for people downtown or getting seniors out of flooded housing? So in my mind, the priority's pretty simple. Have to support it.
I will say, we didn't hear back from FEMA yet about the money, so we're waiting on that piece of it. And regardless of the housing, whether this happens or not, Garden Grove will not be around, and flooding can happen even next year. So there's a lot of if, ands, and buts about it. So it's not to say we are against, we are all against having any more flooding issues anywhere. That's not even a question. So I don't think that, that's the part of this discussion right now. Mark?
Okay.
Okay. Basically, I am very supportive of housing in this community. I served on the Manhattan Public Housing Authority for five or six years, and I forget which, but very committed to it. This is replacement housing. We aren't gaining new housing units. I am, of course, concerned about the flooding on Garden Way and the, leaving people in harm's way there, and I don't consider that that's what I'm doing. I think that this project could go different places, but it's at this place because of the free parking lot. The, I am so supportive of the city applying for the FEMA funds, and I'm very appreciative of the National Church Residences offering to pay the match for that as they want to leave that site. That is just the greatest news, that we can piece that together and make that happen. For the, the 62 residents, it matters. This project started with regard to Carlson Plaza. It's kind of morphed and changed over time, and I, certainly, when I was on the Housing Authority, there was discussion about mold at that facility, and I'm sure it has only gotten worse, and as you've moved people out for that reason, continuing, I bet, I think there were six, the last time I checked, left, six tenants left in the building. So that's an indication that it has to be, it has to go. And, but, so I agree that there's some urgency here. I just philosophically disagree with the notion of giving the parking lots away that are assets for the citizens of our community as a whole, and I want to be a good steward of those, and so I, I would, the motion this evening is to execute a pre-development agreement with the Housing Authority to develop a portion of the city parking lot into low-income, senior public housing. So it is not, it, where is the piece here about?
We have to have site control to do it, so unless that's part of it, it wouldn't matter.
It would be part of the final development agreement, mayor.
Is the final development agreement in this motion?
No. It, it has contingencies within it that need to be realized before a final development agreement is, is, for your consideration.
I'm going to vote no on the, on the, giving the parking lot away. So that's, if this, if it's not included in this, then I would support this, this evening.
This moves it to where they can apply for the credits. If they receive the credits, we'll put together a final development agreement that will transfer the land.
Include the land, okay. Good clarification, thank you. It wasn't apparent. All right, thank you. Is there other comment this evening? Okay, we're ready for a motion, and I'm sure John is eager to.
Yes, I am. I move to authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute a pre-development agreement with the Manhattan Housing Authority to develop a portion of the city parking lot at Fifth and Pierre Street into low-income, senior public housing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Brenda Wolf, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda this evening is the presentation of the 2021 city audit, and Rena Neal, the director of finance, is here with us. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, and city commissioners. Again, good evening, mayor and city commissioners. Tonight I have Dr. Eric Higgins, who is the chair of the municipal audit committee here this evening, and on Zoom with us, I have Emily Sheldon, the manager with BT and Co., our auditors, and let me make sure I share the screen so she can chime in as well. Emily, can you hear us? Great. As in the past years, excuse me, the finance department worked with AGH, Alan Gibbs and Hulick out of Wichita, they are CPA firm, and they worked with us to prepare our work papers and trial balances for our 2021 audit. The financial statements were audited by BT and Co. out of Topeka. In your packet for your review, you had the independent auditor's report, a report to the city commission, the passenger facility charge report, which is related to our municipal airport, our regional airport, and then our annual comprehensive financial report was linked in your memo. Results of the 2021 city audit, the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The city received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest audit opinion. The city had no internal control deficiencies. The annual comprehensive financial report is listed in these sections. Of importance are the ones that are highlighted, the financial section, which lists all of our financial statements, and then the notes to the financial statements, additional information, supporting that financial section information, and then our single audit section, which lists out our federal awards for the year. Our schedule of expenditures and federal awards, our CIFA, we had no material weaknesses identified related to our federal grants that the city received in 2021. We had over 10 million in federal expenditures related to the following HUD, Department of Transportation, Department of Treasury, National Science Foundation, United States Small Business Association, the Department of Health and Human Services and Homeland Security. The major programs that were evaluated and audited were the Airport Improvement Program and the COVID-19 Coronavirus Relief Fund, our ARCA funds. Of the total expenditures, 2.96 million were airport-related and 5.2 million were COVID-related. These two programs total 8.18 million and expenditures are 81% of the total federal expenditures that were received in 2021. This slide just lists out what we need to do to prepare for the 2022 audit. We have been meeting with departments to discuss the grants that they received in 2022, and then we are collecting information regarding the new GSB 87 pronouncement regarding lease accounting reporting. We've talked about that in the last year. We will be working to procure some software that would assist us in those calculations. We have not only to calculate the leases that we are the lessor, where we are receiving funds such as at the airport, but then also where we're the lessy when we're purchasing vehicles and equipment, things like that. We plan to have a pre-audit meeting with BT and Co. and AGH to set the timeline and expectations for the 2022 audit. We'll be meeting with the Manhattan Housing Authority to discuss plans for their 2022 audit and future audits, their contract with their auditor ends as of the 2021 audit, and so we have been talking to them about what they need in terms of assistance and support going forward with their future audits. And then we will have weekly meetings with AGH to discuss the 2022 audit plan and ensure that everything is completed at, at a timely manner as possible. That is all I have in terms of the presentation. We have Dr. Higgins here for any questions that you all may have of the municipal audit committee, and then we have Emily Sheldon. I would like for her to speak about the information that you received in terms of the report.
Thank you, Rena.
You're welcome. Emily, you can go if you would like.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rena Sess. Emily Sheldon. I'm manager with BT and Co. and I'm on the audit. As I have previously presented in detail to the municipal audit committee, I am going to summarize the results of the fiscal year 2021 audit for this evening. Specifically, I will address the key points in our audit report, addressed to the city commission that was included in the fiscal year 2021 audit packet. In that report, we address our responsibility to perform an audit in accordance with specific auditing standards. Those standards require us to perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance about whether about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. Our procedures include examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. We also assess accounting principles used and the significant estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. I am pleased to report, as Rena said, that as a result of our audit, we determined that the fiscal year 2021 financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with the generally accepted accounting principles. We did issue an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best kind of opinion that the city can receive. I would like to inform the Commission that during our audit, city management and staff were helpful, responsive, and transparent with our team members. And I'd like to especially thank Rena and her team for their hard work. An audit requires a tremendous amount of time and effort above and beyond normal duties. And Rena is very gracious in working with us. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you very much. It's always a good audit report when there are no findings and the report is unmodified. That's good news for all of us, certainly. Dr. Higgins, you're the expert on the City Audit Committee with
He's the expert.
With our Commissioner Mark Hattasal, who serves on that board.
So yeah, thank you for having us as always. I would like to thank our committee members on the Audit Committee, Commissioner Hattasal, Rich Jankovic and Jane Bloodgood, whose term expired but was on the committee for a while with us. Of course, big thanks to Rena Neal and her staff for all that they do, getting things together. And obviously, a great report. Thanks to Emily and BT&amp;Co for their help and AGH helping us out to get it together. As a reminder, the Audit Committee is there to kind of serve, to provide oversight in terms of the audit procedures as things begin and kind of monitor the progress as things go, make sure everything is working well, and to make any suggestions where relevant when there could be some issues. Obviously, we didn't have any, and so we didn't have any problems with that, but we've met several times. And again, great report and great job by Rena, so, thanks for having us.
Thank you, appreciate you sitting here all evening.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Next time, maybe a little earlier on the agenda, that'd be great, but other than that, happy to be here and help out.
Thank you for your time and serving on the committee. I know you're at Kansas State University and you have other things to do too, so.
It's happy to help out anytime.
I would like to ask anyone, everyone, to help recruit someone to replace Jane Bloodgood on the committee. It's hard to find an accountant to serve on the committee.
Yeah, that would be great, if anyone out there is interested. It's fun.
I think it'd be a good, for a young accountant, as a resume item or something, you know, it's not heavy, heavy duty.
Well, and it's great to help your community.
That's right.
It's important to have community service and help out when you can, and so those that are interested.
Takes all of us.
I think it's great, you guys do a great job, and I wouldn't want to sit through everything you guys.
You don't want to vote against parking lots?
I don't, I don't even want to hear about parking lots. You guys have done a great job, and we appreciate it.
I appreciate your work, thank you so much.
Thanks.
I thank you for the report. I just wanted to know, how does this have, does this play a role at all in our bond rating and our ratings or anything, or are those just two separate things?
Yes, so our audit and our financial report are shared with our investors. So we just had a rating call for our December temporary notes. And so they do look at our financial statements and compare our fund balances. And they have different methodologies that they use to calculate our credit worthiness. So this does play a role in our bond rating and our review.
I mean, I would say those are required by the bond companies that we have audited financial statements, or else you're not going to get that.
Okay, well, that's good to know. When would we know our next bond rating again? You said December?
So we'll finalize the sale in December, we'll have the actual sale at the end of the month. So they will have a report or credit rating sometime either next week or the week after Thanksgiving.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we owe Rena a terrific debt of gratitude for pulling all this stuff together with short of staff, because she, even her right-hand person left to head out of town here a month or so ago. And so, yeah, thanks so much for all your work, and we really got to do something to get some accountants hired for that city here, because this is nuts, the work that her and her team are having to put in for this kind of thing.
Thank you, and I do want to thank the staff, not only within the Finance Department, but citywide for their assistance. We are out recruiting for a controller and an accountant, one and an accountant two as well. So thank you.
I too want to express our management thanks to you, Rena. I know you've put in a lot of extra hours and a lot of extra work, and so have many of your staff and wore multiple hats, so we appreciate all you've done to pull everything together. And certainly, we've got some things we need to work on with some of our component units, and that's something we'll likely visit with the Commission about, to how we can help them to be more successful in getting things done in a more timely basis.
Rena, thank you from all of us. I really appreciate the city manager and the Commissioner who serves on, and the Dr. Higgins that work on the committee for singing your praise, because otherwise, we wouldn't know all the hours you're putting in. So thank you very much from all of us.
You're welcome, thank you.
Audits are big deals, and they're behind the scenes, and there's no, it doesn't show up until, you know, the final. And we have had some findings in the past, so I, sigh of relief this year. So thank you very much for pulling that off, yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Emily.
And this is, we have, we're receiving your audit, we officially receive your audit, Rena, the audit report, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening, Emily.
Yes, thank you. And the next item is on the general agenda, is item D?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Do you want to receive the?
It doesn't say that.
I move, we received the Municipal Audit Committee's report for the 2021 city audit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there no more comment? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata, I mean Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your backtracking us here. Item D is to consider the Aggieville parking garage fees and first reading of an ordinance suggesting district on-street and off-street parking from three hours to two hours. And there's a 1A option and a 1B, so Jason Hilders, if you would lead us in that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As a follow-up to our meeting two weeks ago, we had a resolution on the agenda for one hour of the free parking option in the garage. There was discussion of going to two-hour. We have prepared both those resolutions. In addition, we've drafted an ordinance that would convert the existing three-hour in Aggieville for on-street and off-street parking to transition to a two-hour parking limitation in the district. That would be consistent with what we've done in Aggieville before, what we currently do in downtown. And our parking officers would patrol not only Aggieville as a district, but downtown as a district with two-hour. I'm not going to belabor this, but I gave you two, we gave you two options because I still believe and recommend one hour. This is about revenue. This is about us being able to pay bills, that's why I did. That's about the bottom line for me. I know there's other things at work here, but as staff, I think we owe that to the organization to try to generate the revenues we forecasted to pay the bills. But other than that, do you have any questions for staff?
Commissioners. And you would be proposing that the two-hour or the one-hour free would be both on the street and in the garage?
No, the garage
Clarify then?
The garage has two options for free parking.
Okay.
A one-hour or a two-hour time limit.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at tonight is the garage only?
That's the resolution, correct. Those are your options.
All right, thank you.
You go one hour or two-hour. The draft ordinance addresses on-street and parking lots in Aggieville, not the garage.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Is it possible to put a deadline? I don't know, I was thinking till some of the construction is done, like maybe two or three years, because otherwise, we're losing $53,000 a year.
We will come back to you, probably within six months, twelve months, to let you know how it's going, because you do control that ultimate financial arm, and we want to keep you updated just to how it's doing and how it, what kind of revenue it's generating. We have a half-million-dollar budget. If we're online to generate a half-million dollars, you know, everybody's going to feel pretty good about it. If we're online to generate $100,000, we have a $400,000 gap, that's two-thirds of a mil. That's what it takes to run it. So we've got to find the revenue one way or another, or we change the way we run it and we get rid of people. We really wanted to hold off on buying all the tech and hiring all the people and buying the equipment and the vehicles, but we thought we were on a path here to generate enough revenue. We're going to keep you posted, and you'll have the opportunity to change anything in the future.
And there was discussion about paying for it out of ECO Devo funds. A couple Commissioners had mentioned that, so I just wanted to put that out there. But okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, the one thing, you know, that really wasn't highlighted was the fact that there are going to be parking tickets, you know, as part of this. And so one of the reasons I support this is I really, we don't really know what the estimate that is going to be, and my anticipation is that there'll be a pretty big spike in parking tickets when we go to this, and then it will, it will drop off, and then we'll have some consistency. But that should also directly result in the behavior modification that we're looking at on where people park and how they park. And so, yeah, I expect us to review this in six months or a year. But for right now, I still think the best option is the, you know, two-hours free. And I'd be up to vote to change that based on what data comes back, because you're absolutely right. We got to, we got to make this work, and, you know, I don't want to have to rely on using some other funds to fill the gap.
Yeah, I'm for the two and two, just because of all the construction down there and needing to help out the businesses. I was one who suggested ECO Devo dollars, looking at it as it is economic development. We want to keep those companies viable that are down there. When I looked at an amount, I was thinking of what you guys had given us, the $53,000 or so that we thought we would lose, so that was a number in my head about as far as voting to it. But obviously, we'll have to see what the numbers come in at.
I support just biting the bullet and going with the one-hour free parking, and I oppose economic development funds for this. I don't think that's what we envisioned economic development funds for. We wanted to start new businesses and support new initiatives, not supplement the parking fund. So if that's basically where I fall.
Yeah, I'm about an hour and a half. Can you get any excitement about that? So, I don't know, I, I'm, yeah, basically with when there, let's go with two hours for now, and that'll give us a year for at least the strip of North Manhattan in front of the parking garage to get open, to make that at least a little bit more accessible to everybody else. But yeah, this, like I said last time, this parking down there is a moving target. What's a good idea today, it's not going to be a good idea in six months, which will be a terrible idea in a year. And so we'll, let's roll the dice, take our chances, and then we'll fix it next time, and we'll tweak it, and we'll change it some more, and hopefully, in the meantime, there's not too much harm done.
Kind of see this like what we did at the airport, I think we kind of missed, I don't know how it is at the airport exactly right now, but it's good for me to look at it, like you said, incrementally as we move forward. We kind of do that with pool fees all the time to see mainly, I'm mainly concerned about all the construction that's happening now and in the future, and do this first six months more like a pilot program. If it does change behavior or if it doesn't change behavior, we won't know till probably June of next year, once in January they start kicking in. I don't even know how many people are actually using the garage right now and it's free, so.
The Commissioners have reflected, is there a public comment? Now would be a good time. Hi.
Me again, Cam Ward. I appreciate the Commission reconsidering the preliminary plan for the one hour. In our Aggieville Business Association Board meetings, we've met with Ms. Tucker a handful of times, who's done an outstanding job laying out a plan to make this a huge part of business in Aggieville. But I started thinking this week with this vote coming up about some of the actual circumstances that exist in our district. If we continue to have more free parking on the street, even if it's through the construction phase, I think about where the available parking is going to be for the populations that need it the most. I see every age of person visit Aggieville. And if we've got more parking that gets filled up sooner on the street because there's more time to park, I think about our senior citizens that are coming down to Aggieville to have their lunch, to get their haircut, to shop. I think about our disabled customers. There's obviously no handicap street parking right there in most areas of Aggieville. So I think that if the garage is the only option because the street is full, where are our senior citizens and our disabled individuals going to park that really need that? So that helps you guys fill that garage up if we have some equity between the street parking, the garage parking. I absolutely understand and agree with Mr. Hilders' comments about being able to reconsider this with your comments about being able to reconsider it. It's a tough time in Aggieville. I have trouble getting to work most days because different streets and drives are closed at different times. I really want to see our businesses succeed, and I know every single one of you sitting up here wants to see our businesses succeed. Commissioner Ready, I really appreciate your comments for both the Back Nine and the MHA project about looking at those business districts' opinions and the folks that are helping to lead and make decisions for those districts, having their voices heard, because that's something that I know I appreciate as a citizen of this town that, not just Commissioner Ready, but a lot of you do listen to us. It might not seem like a big deal, but the difference in the parking time is going to be a big deal when we see the street full and that garage empty. I want to see that $53,000 come in to the city, but I don't think it's going to be there if we don't have some equity there, so, thank you.
Dennis Cook, Aggieville Business Association, again. You know, and we really appreciate the kind of compromise offer. It really makes sense, this is exactly what we're looking at. And one of the things that we haven't really talked about, and Commissioner Ready, you did mention it earlier, you know, when we talked about parking. And, you know, with what you passed or approved earlier this evening, once, once the construction gets started in that public parking lot by Back Nine Development, overnight, we'll lose about a hundred, a little bit over a hundred parking spaces as soon as they start. That takes care of the public parking lot, and then the parking that was in the private parking lot that he, that also those people will move, are looking. I think, I think the numbers are a real moving target. I think a lot of people will be going, who are down there now, who possibly are parking on the street, will move to the garage. And I think, I think we're going to, we're going to change those numbers dramatically. So this is the, this is the best option, we believe, for us. And we hope that's the direction you go is the two and two. Thank you.
So pitching the three was just an effort to get the compromise to two? At the last meeting, you wanted three hours free parking.
Oh, four, five, no.
You don't have to answer that, thank you.
Well, yeah, you said one, I said three.
Yeah.
Look where we are, this is great.
You were after two, okay.
Dan Engel, 23, 16 respiratory drive. I was supposed to sit on the board with, in Aggieville. I believe that two hours is probably good. I actually did a survey of my own, unscientific. I took my 73-year-old mother from the parking garage, the top floor, the second to the top floor, and walked her from the second to the top floor all the way down to Nikos for dinner and walked all the way back. We didn't wait that long. It wasn't that busy. But in that time, it took us an hour and 45 minutes. So, and that was when they were proposing the one-hour time limit. So I thought that the two hours is at the very least, two hours is what we really need, at the very, very least. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you. I missed your last name.
Engel.
Engel, thank you. All right. I appreciate you coming this evening.
Hello, good evening. Andrea Olean, Haynes Salon, 100 South Manhattan. Thank you, guys Commissioners, for all you do. Considering the two hours down there, especially during construction time, is appreciated. And I think we all agree, we can revisit this at any time. I would just like to see you guys do the two-hour parking. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? Okay, so we're looking at a budget shortfall?
Potential. Everything's potential.
$53,000 or something with the plan that the Commissioners are going to approve?
Probably. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 111523C, establishing the fees within the parking garage with two hours free and first reading of an ordinance adjusting the remaining parking hours from three hours to two hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. in Aggieville.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would City Clerk call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. With that, we have concluded the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Would you call the roll, Brenda?
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.